Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will be beginning with the closed session agenda. Madam Board.
Closed session for today, May ninth. Item one, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D two, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item two, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Rose Leanne Bell versus Calaveras County at all, Calaveras County Superior Court case number two-two-CV-four-six-four-nine-one.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on either of these items online?
There are none online.
No? Seeing none in the room, we will move to closed session and we'll return to these chambers at nine o'clock. Thank you.
You're good.
Hi. Good morning. Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Supervisor Toffeney will not be joining us today, so I get to chair this meeting. So here we go. We'll begin, we came out of closed session, so please, if you're able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Supervisor Toffeney, will you lead us?
Thank you, Reverend E. Running again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great and justness of God.
Thank you very much. We can move on staff announcements?
Sorry?
Staff announcements?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. To report out in closed session.
I can report out. There is no reportable action was taken in closed session on either item. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Dolly's gonna have to wait a second. Oh, here she comes. Staff announcements. Ms. Lane?
Good morning, Honorable Board, CEO Hitchcock. My name is Terry Lane. I'm the Executive Director of First Five Calaveras, a division of the Health and Urban Services Agency. I'm happy to be here this morning to talk about a collaboration with the Calaveras Community Foundation. We're excited to announce that we have brought Dolly Parton's Imagination Library here for the young children in Calaveras. This program provides free books to children that are ages zero through four years old by mailing a book to their home every month. Eligibility is easy. The child needs to live in Calaveras County, be a child under five years old, and have an address where the book can be mailed to them. And enrollment is easy as well. A parent or guardian may call First Five Calaveras at two oh nine seven five four six nine one four, or they can fill out a registration form that's at the libraries, at the preschools. They can have this directly to First Five Calaveras, or they can go onto the website. It's imaginationlibrary.com and they can sign their child up that way. So it's that simple. The Dolly Road Foundation gives us a guideline of enrollment based on the nation's average. So they say that after a year, an failure should hit about twenty percent enrollment. We've reached that mark after seven weeks with a now already a four hundred and twelve local children program. Our goal is that the eligible one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven children in our county, they're everyone who are enrolled for free books. So there's only fifteen hundred to go. So please help us spread the word. I have some registration forms and some little Imagination Library pins for you. Thank you very much. And our staff hopes to see you at the frog jump this afternoon. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry, and thank you very much, Dolly, for joining us today. Ms. Medina?
It's kind of hard to beat Dolly Parton.
It's tough to beat her.
Good morning, Vice Chair Gueremendi, Honorable Board members, the County Council, and our CEO Hitchcock, Elisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency Administrator and Environmental Health Director. So Memorial Day is coming up here pretty soon, just around the corner. And this is the unofficial opening season for pools. Those are our public swimming pools. Environmental Health recently sent out an email. We blasted the email out to our pool operators. And it's a newsletter which educates our pool operators and owners regarding things that they need to do to maintain their pool and to get ready for our health inspectors. Including in some of that information that we did send out to our pool operators and owners is a self-inspection checklist. And anytime those pool operators can call our office and ask questions regarding the potential inspections. So we're there to help them out. So our health inspectors will be visiting the pools, public pools permitted under Environmental Management, over the next couple of months. And we want to make sure that they're ready for us. And in doing so, some of those pool, public pools are located at apartment complexes, HOAs. Other ones, other facilities include schools, Bret Hart, hotels and motels. If any of our public pool operators have any questions, please feel free to have them contact myself or our office at seven five four six three nine nine, and they can speak to their assigned inspector. So next, moving on to animal services. We are getting ready for another event, Free Rabies and Microchip Clinic, to be held here at the Government Center on Saturday. That is going to be June tenth from noon to noon. We have Dr. Kathy Gatlin, the attending veterinarian, and we're looking forward to seeing our community out there. In April, our dog volunteers gave over six hundred and four hours of their precious time to help assist us with our pups and our dogs. And also in April, our cat volunteers gave over a hundred and four hours of their precious time to assist us. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other staff announcements? Skolendo?
Good morning, Vice Chair, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. Exciting news. We are getting even more close to getting the runway, our airport runway resurfaced. We're going to have a closure next week, beginning on Wednesday through Thursday, which will be off-peak. So it will be from six PM in the evening till eight AM in the morning. Then the following week, May twenty-second through May twenty-ninth, the entire week, the airport will be closed for resurfacing. So if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out, and we're getting it done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other staff announcements? Seeing none. We get to move on to recognition and acknowledgement. It is great to see so many familiar faces in this room. A lot of good times. So let's start with Calaveras High School. And as you see, we got the colors out today. Blooming, ready to go. We're gonna pass it to our Calaveras High School graduate. You did graduate, right Supervisor?
Supervisor Gueremendi, they didn't want to see me another year. And I mean, just to see so many of these valedictorians, you know, I'm really glad that you took your education seriously. I would have become a lot more structured a lot earlier and made it a lot farther if I hadn't had followed the route that you had. So this is phenomenal, something to be proud of. So this is a proclamation recognizing the two thousand and twenty-three valedictorians from Calaveras High School. Whereas each year, an elite group of students meets the academic standard necessary to be a declared valedictorian for their graduating high school class. And whereas the coursework completed is difficult and the competition for such an honor is competitive. And whereas these students serve as role models for their classmates and underclassmen through exemplifying critical thinking, effective communication, problem-solving, and organizational skills. And whereas, in addition to achieving a cumulative grade point average of four point oh or higher, these students have demonstrated many admirable qualities such as integrity, hard work, determination, and a commitment to excellence throughout their four years in high school. And whereas these students are honored at their high school graduation ceremony, but because the achievement is so significant, worthy of commendation, the Calaveras Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize them as well. And whereas, excuse me, if I mispronounce anybody's name, it's the Calaveras High School Valedictorians for two thousand and twenty-three in order of class rank are Lyndon Olmsted, four point three four one, Kaden Jones, four point two eight three, Talia Forre, four point two five six, Tanner Wright, four point two three nine, L.A. Golding, four point one eight two, Madison Boyd, four point one seven four, Madison Bernusconny, four point one four oh, Grace Damon, four point one one four, Rita Araho, four point zero nine one, Braden Brim, four point zero eight nine, Elizabeth Sealy, four point zero four three, Merrick Strange, four point zero four three, Lanny Cupp, four point zero two three, Rhiannon Cavender, four point zero zero, Brooke Nordahl, four point zero zero, Aubrey Horla, four point zero zero, and Ashley Riger, four point zero zero. There's so many names on there that I actually went to school with their parents. Your parents would have done better if I hadn't gone with them. So any public comment that would like to make a comment on this? Any proud parents, students that would like to stand up, teachers, principals? Thank you.
Obviously, we are so proud of the work that these students have done and so excited to see what they do in the future. These last few weeks of school will be just, will be fast, and we just want to be able to spend every moment with these students that have worked so hard. And I want the students to take in every moment as well. But I do want to say one thing. These students were in the center of COVID shutdown. And it was not easy, right, to learn from home. Some felt it was really easy. Most felt it was difficult. We lost a lot of student engagement. But all of these students stayed engaged, right, kept their grades up, even through the state mandate of hold harmless for a semester. And I just want us to remember what they've done. This will be something that they can carry through life because of the need for persistence and resilience through that. So.
I bow to all of you. I'm so proud.
Thank you so much for all of your support for your students. It's an amazing path for these guys.
Any further comments?
Lord Board, Supervisor Stoppa, I would certainly repeat a lot of your comments myself in relationship to if we had to do over again in high school and the importance of grades and all. I'd just like to reach out, Terry Strange, my son Merrick, as well as all the other students, and just acknowledge the hard work. We have a lot of athletes here that, you know, had many, many hours away from school and studies, you know, as well as so many other students that had so many other, you know, things in life going on, including COVID and all. At least for us, my family, Muriel, Merrick's sister, was in the middle of COVID. So unfortunately, she was also valedictorian but couldn't participate in this kind of event. So it's really very much appreciated by the Strange family, as well as, I'm sure, all the others of recognition today. And thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. But again, kids, you did a great job.
Mr. Gueremendi, may we entertain a motion?
Sure. Maybe some board comments. I'd like to just make a quick comment. I know a lot of you kids, young men and women, from our, obviously, our kids went to school, you went to school with my son and parents as well. And I agree with Ben, some of your parents, I go back to high school myself. But, you know, you have accomplished a great thing. You are some of the finest products that we're going to present out of this county. And go out in the world, see it, bring those ideas home. Run for this seat. Run for Ben's seat. Be a part of your community. We're proud of you. We want you to go out and do great things and represent this county well. And if you can, come on back and settle down. You'll find, as you see the world, Calaveras is a pretty good place. So I want to congratulate you and I want to thank the parents because this is a journey no one makes alone. So we're very proud of you guys. Thank you. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely, Mr. Gueremendi. A motion by Supervisor Gueremendi.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Fuldorff. All those in favor? Aye. Passes on a four oh one absent. Phenomenal job. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors commends these students' name as valedictorians for two thousand and twenty-three on their impressive accomplishments. Passed and adopted by the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, State of California, on this ninth day of May two thousand and twenty-three. You rock. Come on.
I missed it. I looked over.
Look at you. I have really like oranges.
Okay, hold up your confirmation. All right.
Go for this one first. There you go. Go for this one first. Okay, this one now.
Have a pair of cut the photo. All right, guys. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Terry?
Terry, how's it going?
All right. Let everybody exit the room and then we'll get to the questions. Hi. Board of Supervisors is now going to get back to business here. And I want to make a special thank you to Stacy, who did all the decorations.
Thank you.
Just together today. So thank you. Next item is item four, adopting a proclamation recognizing Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee. Mark?
Thank you. I will read this. Proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee, May eighteenth through twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee will be held on May eighteenth through twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas two thousand and twenty-three marks the hundred and thirtieth anniversary of the Calaveras County Fair. And whereas the first fair of record was held in eighteen ninety-three in Copperopolis. And whereas the first modern-day frog jump was held in nineteen twenty-eight and is celebrating its ninety-fifth year. And whereas the annual fair is a community event which highlights agriculture, the arts, floriculture, and the best Calaveras. And whereas the Calaveras County Fair generates hundreds of thousands of dollars for the youth of Calaveras County through the junior livestock auction, industrial arts auction, and scholarship programs. And whereas the annual economic impact of Calaveras County exceeds five million dollars. And whereas the theme of the two thousand and twenty-three frog jump is Frog Cheers for One Hundred and Thirty Years. And whereas the community celebrates together as one. And strangers become neighbors and children make memories. And therefore, I'm sorry, I put it out to the public. I started going too far. For any comments? Is there any public comment?
We are very excited for our hundred and thirtieth year. If you didn't do this year's fair, our family of the year is the Fuldorff family, which Supervisor Fuldorff is part of. We're very excited about that. Our programs are exploding. We're actually having to tent down at the animal area because we've ran out of barn space. I never thought that would happen, but it did. So we're really, really excited. We want to thank the county for their support. And you are great partners. And so tickets are available at frogtown.org. We're going to have the frog ringers here, jumping frogs here today as part of our tradition. And so we're just really excited. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments online?
There are no public comments online.
Bring it back to the board.
So moved. Supervisor Hubbard?
Second.
Aye. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee to be the signature event in Calaveras County. It is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this ninth day of May two thousand and twenty-three. Lori, you've been organizing this for so long. We appreciate your dedication for the county and keeping this organization above water and successful. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hubbard. Appreciate that. The next proclamation is item number five, adopting proclamation declaring May two thousand and twenty-three as Military Appreciation Month in Calaveras County. I'll pick on that one. So this is a proclamation declaring May two thousand and twenty-three as National Military Appreciation Month in Calaveras County. Whereas Senator John McCain introduced Military Appreciation Month in nineteen ninety-nine, encouraging Americans to remember the sacrifices made by those who served and have served in our armed forces. And whereas millions of active duty National Guard and Reserve personnel conduct the work of their day, knowing they are prepared to defend our country at a moment's notice. And whereas families watch their children and siblings take their oath of enlistment or oath of office proudly, knowing what it means, what it stands for, and what it requires. And whereas May has several days of observance regarding the U.S. military, including Loyalty Day, Victory Day in Europe, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, Armed Forces Day, and Memorial Day. And whereas on federal holidays in Calaveras County, communities place flags along the main roadside and memorials to honor its military service members and veterans. Are there any public comments on this item? Here we go.
Good morning, Board. Madam CEO, welcome to Calaveras County. I am Brian Galicia, the Calaveras County Veteran Service Officer. And as we celebrate National Military Appreciation Month, I want to acknowledge the impact of a particular group who have served our country since before the establishment of our country, and that is the Women of America. According to the two thousand and twenty-one USO article, "Over Two Hundred Years of Service: The History of Women in the U.S. Military," documentation shows women have served in the U.S. military as far back as the Revolutionary War. Records found one woman disguised herself as a man in order to travel with her husband into war. When he was shot during battle, she took up his post loading a cannon, even after having been shot three times herself. During the Civil War, over twenty thousand women helped in the effort by growing crops to feed the Army, cooking for them, and other similar tasks. It is believed about one thousand women disguised themselves as men in order to fight. World War I brought women into open service, monthly, mostly in the form of nurses. About three thousand nurses were stationed in France near the front lines. The Navy created Yeomanettes and enlisted about twelve thousand women to perform clerical and telephone duties. The U.S. Army Signal Corps also enlisted women to work as telephone on front lines and switch, I'm sorry, work as telephone and switchboard operators nicknamed Hello Girls. They often worked in France near the front lines. They would not be recognized for their high-pressure work or status as veterans until nineteen seventy-nine. World War II brought the creation of the Women's Army Corps, or WACs, the Army's Women's Air Force Service Pilots, or WASPs, the Navy's Women Accepted for Volunteer Emergency Service Waves, the United States Marine Corps Women's Reserves, and the Coast Guard's Women Reserves, better known as SPARs, which stands for the Coast Guard's motto, Semper Pratus, Always Ready. During the war, there were three hundred fifty thousand women in uniform. Four hundred thirty-two were killed in the line of duty, and eighty-eight were taken as prisoners of war. The Korean War saw a hundred and twenty thousand women serving, in-country serving, the majority being nurses in mobile Army surgical hospitals, better known as MASH units. During the Vietnam War, eleven thousand women were boots-on-ground in Vietnam. Ninety percent were nurses from the Army, Navy, and the Air Force. Most of them volunteered to go on their own. Since the beginning of the twenty-first century, there have been many firsts for women. The first woman Navy fighter pilot, the first female four-star general in the Army, the first female Coast Guard rescue swimmer. Two thousand and thirteen saw the lift on the ban on women in combat completely and brought women service members into direct combat roles. Women were completing rigorous training such Women were completing rigorous training such as the Army's Ranger School and the Navy's SEAL Officer Assessment and Selection. More than 300,000 women served in Iraq and Afghanistan since 9/11, and more than 9,000 of them earned Combat Action badges. Women make up 16% of our nation's armed forces serving in every branch. Please join me in celebrating the women of our US military past and present during this National Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry?
Hello again. I just wanted to take this moment to thank Brian for giving that wonderful tribute to the women of the forces. But personally with me, my mom was a WAC, a woman of the Army Corps in World War II, and she would just be so proud that you called that out and remembered that. My dad was also in World War II as well, and I was just sitting back there and it just touched my heart, you know, to say thank you for doing that, and thank you for making this proclamation today.
Thank you very much. Any comment online?
There are no online comments.
Let me ask a question before we get going. Can everybody who served in a uniform, including our police order or fire, stand up? Be all part of this team that makes this happen. Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Moved by Supervisor Hubbard?
A second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 401 absent. Therefore, be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May, 2023, as National Military Appreciation Month in the County of Calaveras and encourages its residents to show their gratitude by the appropriate display of the American flag during this time. Thank you very much.
We're not going to make Brian stand alone.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. This is a proclamation kind of day. All right. Number six. Proclamation recognizing May, 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Who's got? Okay, we're going to move on to, we're going to come back to this. Did I hand it to you? Okay, sorry about that, guys. Ladies, who's been this one? Gary was on the committee, but.
You've already started it off, Jack.
My apologies, my apologies for the mix-up. Okay. Whereas creating a safe and healthy community in which all individuals feel comfortable, reaching out for the support they deserve is crucial to ending the stigma around mental health, and whereas mental health challenges are some of the most common health conditions in California, affecting one out of six adults and impacting both the person experiencing mental health challenges and those persons who care for and love the person facing the challenge, and whereas our mental health deserves the same attention as our physical health, but is far too often overlooked or ignored. This May, during Mental Health Matters Month, there is renewed focus on the actions we can take in our community to support our own mental health and the mental health of people we care about. There's no better time than now to attend to our mental health needs, and whereas the Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency Behavioral Health Program is dedicated to enhancing ongoing supports by providing tools and resources to raise awareness and to help break the stigma of mental health. Is there any public comments on this issue? Wendy?
Good morning, Board. Wendy with Behavioral Health, and I would just like to take the time to thank all of the Behavioral Health staff that are here today and the ones that are in the office. There's 63 of them that keep our program running, from transportation to billing to therapists, to case managers, to the peer specialists. We couldn't do it without them, so thank you all. And with that.
Hello, Board. My name's Steve, and I'd just like to relay a story about behavioral health. Back in March, I found out that my older brother had got murdered, and I was really disappointed and recovering pathetic, and so alls I wanted to do was go get high. But I went and talked to my coworkers, and everybody surrounded me, and you would not believe how great Calaveras County's behavioral health system works. It completely showed me. Now, everybody says that because I asked, that that's why I got to help, but it's not true. It's because I trust these people, and that's what they do. They help people and they make people understand that there is people that care about them. And I would just like to thank everybody, Wendy and everybody, for being there in my time of need, and I hope that if I can help out somebody in their time of need, that I'm there to do that. Thank you.
And Steve, you do, you help out a lot of people.
Good morning or afternoon, I should say. My name is Todd Massonow. I'm a case manager for Behavioral Health. I've actually worked for our county and want to say hello to our new CIO, here's Cocky on board members, thank you. And I've actually worked at our county for 16 years, yeah, 16 years, the first 14 years in substance abuse, and I want to emphasize the importance of mental health. It is pretty much the earmark of every issue that we have in our community, you know, homelessness, incarceration, and suicide prevention, as we know. So it is incredibly important and valuable, the work that my coworkers do and our team does here for our county. I mean, it is the earmark. So like you already said in the proclamation, our health is important, but you can't have our health unless we continue to take care of our mental health. So thank you all. This is a very important proclamation. Thanks.
Maybe others?
Hello. I'm usually a silent community member, but I do work on the ground levels of behavioral health, and I help a lot of my community people. I'd just like to put out there, the more community environment and less stigma we can provide in our community for our mental health clients is the best. I hope within time we can grow more to that and offer more community, because a lot of our folks do not understand just going out and behaving in the community with others. They feel like they're stigmatized still to this day, even our LGBTQ, and I'd like to see that change and see more brought to our community in those fields, maybe concerts, maybe something free like that. So the work we do with my superiors is wonderful, and I'm here to see change and to see difference, and I'm watching it happen. And the more we see that, it's going to be a beautiful thing. I am a longtime mental health advocate, family member, lived experience, everything. I've gone through death, I've gone through everything. I feel like I am seasoned to my work, but if I can meet a person where they're at and uplift them to a better, better situation in life, I'm going to do that, and thank you for letting me be employed here and be a part of my community. I appreciate you guys and everything we do from ground one.
All right. I see no comments online. Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a comment.
Sorry, I have a comment online.
Yes, we do, yes. Chelsea Childers.
Chelsea?
Molly?
Hi, we can't hear you.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether. Hi, my name is Chelsea Childers. Excuse me. I am going to the Peer Wellness Center in San Andreas. I started, I don't know, like, two, three months ago, and, sorry, I'm, I personally feel that the Wellness Center and the Mental Health Department is one of the greatest things that this county has to offer anyone. I, the year before last, I was living in Santa Rosa for a year homeless, crying.
Sorry, there was a problem.
Are you losing Chelsea?
No, she's there, sorry. There was a problem.
Chelsea?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
I do apologize. I just, I was trying so hard to get help in a different county, and I even got a 5150, or I tried to get a 5150 at a hospital, in an ER, twice in that county, and I got told my access appointment for their help for emergencies was three months out. I moved two days before that appointment to this county. Within a month, I had services with you guys, and since then, I have been actually making progress, being able to recognize when it's too much for my brain, actually making sense of my own mind, just because of the Mental Health Department with you guys. And to be perfectly honest, the Wellness Center in San Andreas is a massive part of that, because once my brain was under enough control, I was looking for people that were like-minded, that were going through the struggles or have been through those struggles and could understand where I was at, without judgment. And now I'm actually facilitating the music group on Mondays, and I absolutely adore it. It's one of the things I look forward to every week, and I just, I can't thank you guys enough for having this program, and I want to do everything in my power to help this program flourish.
Thank you very much, Chelsea. Chelsea, I apologize, but I were limited on time, but I want to congratulate you on your progress and thank you for your kind comments to our program, and continuing volunteer, as Steve said, helping other people out. Other comments? See none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion Supervisor Garmini. I also thank Chelsea and everyone else who shared that shows progress and strength. To be able to share those stories of those points of our lives, thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Fongendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 401 absent. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness Month in Calaveras County, and commits to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible service for all people with mental illness. Thank you very much. And one to you, all in line? All right. Moving on to item number seven. It's adopting proclamation declaring May, 2023 as Foster Care Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Supervisor Fongendorf.
Hey. Whereas the family is the foundation of any strong and healthy community, and whereas all children deserve to grow up in a supportive, loving home where they thrive and prosper, and during these unfortunate times when children cannot remain safely in their own homes, the individuals and families who open their hearts and home to foster children provide a vital service to the children and their communities. Whereas foster parents, including both relatives and non-relatives, extended family members, provide an essential service to the community in caring for children and the youth in foster care. And whereas the importance of family structure is emphasized in foster homes, that model family living as opposed to group care, and whereas stability and permanency for children and foster children is of the utmost importance. Whereas every child in foster care deserves to find permanency, which is defined as a permanent connection with at least one committed adult, and may include biological parents through reunification, or another adult family member, extended family member, adult siblings, or other important individual in the child or youth life who commit to the child through adoption or guardianship. And whereas dedicated care providers model strength-based and solution-focused engagement with children and youth in their care, and with the community-based and government entities providing services and support. And with that, I will open it up to any public comment.
Good morning, Mary Johnson. I'm the Deputy Director for Social Services for Calaveras. Resource parents, formerly foster parents, open their homes to their own relatives, to family, friends, neighbors, sometimes children they've never met, and allow those youth to remain connected to their families, their communities, their schools, while working through issues surrounding trauma, abuse, and neglect. And Calaveras County Child Welfare would really like to take this opportunity to give thanks and appreciation to all of our resource families in Calaveras County for keeping our Calaveras County children and youth connected to the things that matter most to them while showing kindness, compassion, and support for the children in their care. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Are there any online?
There are no online comments.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion? Moved by?
I just wanted to thank Mary and all, and Health Human Services for the incredibly valuable work that you guys do. It is hard work, and it seems like every time you tell me a story, I barely keep my stuff together. So thank you, thank everybody in your shop. You guys are really doing wonderful things. With that, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second by Supervisor Garmini. Second by Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 401 absent. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May as the Foster Care Month, and calls upon its citizens, community groups, tribal partners, religious organizations, government agencies, and concerned individuals. and concerned individuals to engage in the effort on behalf of foster children, the families and resource families during this month and throughout the years. With that, thank you.
All right. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to do public comment, then we're going to get everybody a five-minute bio break before we dig back into the rest of this agenda. So, with that, we will move on to public comment. General public comment. It's for items that are not on the agenda. So, guys, if this item on the agenda, I will stop you, and we'll bring it back to later on. But until then, you got three minutes.
Please.
Good morning, all members. My name is Javier Caltenko. I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Decision. And currently, we have a declaration, a presidential declaration here in the state of California. Actually, we have a couple. But the one I'm going to talk about today has to do with the severe winter storms that happened during February 21st and continuing. To Olami County has been declared as a primary county, and since Calaveras County is next to it, is considered a contiguous county. So therefore, small businesses who are suffering economically, they can actually apply for the Economic Injury Disaster Loan that we have available. We have, okay, so we call it IDO. It's just for short. That's a working capital loan to help those businesses pay for their any financial needs that they have to pay on a monthly basis. So we want to make sure that they're continuing their operations. So if they're having a hard time making payments for their electricity, water, rent, or any other expense similar to that, they can, you know, apply for the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. We, as I mentioned, these are loans, and they are low interest. So for businesses, currently, the interest rate is 4%. And for nonprofit organizations, it's 2.375%. We do have a deadline, so any business who's having a hard time making payments, so they can apply until January 3, 2024. So, you know, so we recommend any individual to please, you know, apply before the deadline. They can go to our website, sba.gov, and they can look at the disaster assistance there, and they can apply there. We also have an 800 number they can call. It's 800. Sorry, I just want to make sure I got the right number. Yeah, 659-2955. They can also call there, and they can request for an application. And I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you very much, and I much appreciate our federal partners.
Yes, thank you.
Other general public comment? Anything online?
There are none online.
Going once, going twice. Board recognizes the County Poet Laureate.
Sorry, it's fair season.
Good morning. Well, yes, my name is Linda Tor, and I am the Calaveras County Poet Laureate. And I meant to be here in April, but things were kind of crazy. So I wanted to give a little report about what's been going on. And I brought you a little gift, a poem in your pocket. That was something that happens every April, and it's something that I've been going around to different events, and having people pick poems, put them in a library pocket, and my only charge is to read the poem to someone else. So in your little poetry pocket, I have three poets that I wanted you to be acquainted with. The first is Dana Joya, who was our previous California Poet Laureate from 2015 to 2018. He was also, back in the day, President of the National Endowment for the Arts and created Poetry Out Loud, that now occurs all across the country. And the second one is Lee Herrick. He's the current California Poet Laureate. And the third poet is Susan Kelly DeWitt, who's an incredible poet out of Sacramento. They're all three going to be at a special event that's part of my laureate program, July 15th, at Big Trees State Park. So this is quite a coup for us, to get these three poets all in the same spot. So I'm really excited about that. And so I have that for you. And then I'd just like to share a poem real quick. One of mine. Who else is dizzy with spring? Long after our Phoebe sings about morning, chickens scratch in the yard offering long-lost eggs as a kind of gratitude. Who else is dizzy with spring turning fresh with green above and below swirls of pine? I lie like a child in the bed of fallen blue, rise into the low sun, leaving young grasses bent with the impression of my faint life. Who else swims in the buzz of bees waiting to be buttercup crazy, waiting to hover in drops of dew? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And thank you for your service to our community as our laureate, our schools. It's, I didn't know I was going to be chair, so I'm going to take the privilege.
Okay. I've been, one of my other projects is community source poems, and I want to have one for every district in our county. I have enough to create a poem for District 2, but I need more. So you might see me with a table outside of a market or something, trying to get people. Alls I need is a word, a phrase. I pull them all together to make a poem that represents your district. So I need more from District 5, 4, and 3. So Jack knows how to contact me, so I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The comment is thrown down, ladies and gentlemen. Very well. With that, we will close public comment. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll resume here at 10:05. Thank you. Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We will move on to consent agenda. We have, we will be pulling item 18 and 19. Is that correct, man? A CAF, CEO?
Yes. Good morning. Robert Pakinger Public Works. I'd like 18 and 19 pulled. We'll put it off for another meeting.
Thank you very much. 18, 19. Is any board supervisors interested in pulling an item from the consent agenda? Other than 18 and 19? Hearing none? Any member of the public? Seeing none? Anything online?
There are no online requests.
Okey-dokey. Very well. Is there a motion for the remainder of the consent item? Guarding excluding 18 and 19. Moved by supervisor Paul North. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero one. Absent. Thank you very much. Okay, we can move on to the regular agenda. Head of court, read us in.
Item 21, informational item, OES. Receive a tree mortality program implementation update from TSS Consultants.
Cameron?
Good morning, Vice Chair and members of the Board, County Council, and CEO Hitchcock. I am Karen Barbour with Calaveras County OES. And today, I am introducing Ted Mason with TSS Consulting and our Tree Mortality Program. May I come in?
Absolutely. Okay, Cameron, would you like to step in?
Yes, please, Ted.
Great. Good. Thank you. First, I'd like to say, representing TSS Consultants, I'm really impressed with the set of proclamations that the board has managed to portray this morning. Especially impressive was the celebration of this classic achievement by the植民者ians, fulfilling the future of our community. I would say the future of X-Spring. If we came back to the Tree Mortality Program, TSS Consultants was retained in the county in October of 2017 to implement tree mortality removal, basically removing hazardous trees along county roads. Since that time, we have implemented 44 projects, removing over 13,000 trees. And these trees basically were removed across private lands, federal lands, and all of these, of course, outside of the Blue Fire footprint. One of our projects coming up, though, we will be operating within that Blue Fire footprint. This slide deck is just the short slides, sub-slides. Basically, we've reviewed the seven projects that we have in various stages of planning and implementation. And we're going to the next slide here. There we go. Okay. Project 31 is located on the San Slos National Forest Management Lands along county roads. This is a project of 260 trees, targeted for removal. Project costs due to the LOES participation is 75%. And then 35% by the U.S. Forest Service. All project costs are covered here, consistent with the Good Name Authority, which we obtained last year on behalf of the county. We're working on the implementation of it right now. But really, because of the snow conditions, the slope will not be able to implement at this time. Next slide. Project 42 is Tree Victory Village in the county line. We've got 48 residential forms returned, 28 trees within the project. Project 43, which will be implemented first up this year, is located within the frame of the Blue Fire. We've got 26 trees targeted for removal, and these were only trees killed by pollution or other causes outside of wildfire impacts. Project implementation to build has been left and rejected within the year of winter. Next. 44 is located within the Victory Village. We've got heavy participation, 138 residential forms returned. Right now, due to snow, our tree marketing is on hold. What we're looking back to is the snow receipts. Project 45 is Blue Spring and other subdivisions, of course, within the area. We've got 166 residential forms returned and we're in the process of marking, well, we're just not marking Project 45, and we have developed the implementation. That will be following Project 43, the Blue Fire footprint. Next slide. 46 is Grand Lighthouse, between Hathaway Pines and Angel's Camp. We've got 36 residential forms, and we are leading more entry forms for start marking trees. 47 is between West 40 and Colman Hill. We're in the process of basically receiving more residential forms. We're at 44 right now. And we're continuing to do outreach to try and wrap up the number of participating landowners. Next slide. So as Red River operates operations, we plan to implement all seven projects this year. Tree mortality continues to be an issue. I know this was a wet witch, but we still have residual from past dry seasons. And beetle counters still have some of the more severe areas of the county that are impacting our natural elevations. We're especially seeing impacts to the rain and white fir at the upper elevations. Next slide. This is a summary slide that we include in our quarterly updates, just summarizing the financial overall rate of human loss of going of the profit rate. As we know, the state is flipping 75% project costs. On top of that, there's a 10% allowance for administration. In past years, CAL FIRE did commit 25% funding as part of their assistance tree mortality reimbursement. That was ending. Bottom line is the cost to the county. The number of over 10,000 trees has come to about $215,677. When you think about that, per tree cost, that comes in at about $18 per tree, a pretty big return on investment for the removal of hazard trees along county roads. Cost of tree, though, on the end, is a little over $500. So with that, I will pause and take questions.
Any questions from the board?
Steve, could you tell me how we can get a better rate of these right entry forms returned to you?
Right. Very good question, supervisor. Thank you for asking. We're perplexed about this as well. We traditionally use press releases. We issue every quote at a venue, and we feature two things around them. We also have been using them in the past, Nextdoor, as well as Facebook, social posts, and have even reached out to local radio stations. So what I'm going to do, supervisor, if I could, is let me confer with Cameron and see if we can come up with some other options for additional outreach. We would absolutely like to see more participation, especially from private landowners in the county. Of course, the federal agencies, Bureau of Land Management, and U.S. Forests are completely on the table, and no issues on most properties. It's the private landowners sometimes that are more reluctant to participate.
If it would help at all, I would like to be involved and see if we could get some boots on the ground for you.
I appreciate that, supervisor. Thank you. We will certainly do that.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? A quick question. Ted, this is Jack Germany. What we do, for those of us who don't do Facebook or know what Nextdoor is, we do do traditional, we do mail to the tax address, I'm assuming, as well.
We absolutely mail these right entry forms to the person, where they self-address, stamp them, we're asking for a response. So in many cases, with these projects, we'll do several mailings, trying to make sure that we get a complete coverage. So we'll continue doing that. But Vice Chair Germany, if you've got some thoughts on other outreach, we're open to it.
We've struggled with this for five years together. Knocked down silver bullet. So are there any comments from the public? Cameron, is there anything more on this? Cameron, is there anything more on this presentation? It's an informational item?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Ted. Thank you very much, Cameron. Appreciate it today.
Take care.
Okay. Brian, you're up next. Item 22, Madam Clerk.
Item 22, informational item. Once it goes red, do it one more time.
Good morning again. Once again, I'm Brang Alicia, County Veteran Service Officer, and I am here to present my semi-annual report to you on the work that our Veteran Service Office does for our community. I give this report every six months to give you an overview of the impact our office has on our community. Some of the information in today's report is taken from the California Association of County Veteran Service Officers and some from local records as well. Each of you was given a copy of the 2222 CACDSO Annual Report that comes out every year in February. And I hope you've had an opportunity to review it. The first thing I'd like to point out is how we did as far as new awards. The first item there under veteran population compared to last year, it looks like we've lost about 300 veterans in our county population. That could be due to veteran passing, it could be due to them moving. However, last year was about 4,309, so we lost about 300. We are seeing, still seeing people in person and getting a lot of phone and email contact. Compared to last year, we did, I believe it was a little over 200 claims. This past year, we did 407. The new awards, previously, we did 1.3 million, and we more than doubled that this last year. And this is just new awards, to veterans receiving disability compensation. If we do the math on that, the general fund support that my office receives, received in that fiscal year was $197,845. The return on that investment to what was brought into the county economy was about $15.47 per dollar spent. So that's more than double, because last year was just under $7 on the return. Let's see, so our local statistics, we, and this is just from January 1st, 2023, through March 31st, 2023, so the first quarter of the calendar year, we received 232 calls, 172 in-person visits, and a total contacts of 404. We conducted four outreach events and received 59 new contacts from those events. Claims-wise, we submitted 257 claims. 166 veterans were represented in those claims. And 76 of them were for compensation, disability compensation. 46 healthcare enrollments. The total retroactive awards that are given to veterans who apply for disability compensation was $158,610.96, with new monthly awards totaling $26,517.37. Since the beginning of the fiscal year 2021, we processed 10 college fee waivers totaling $74,875.86. The next slide is a new graph that I came across, my mentor shared with me. This shows the progress our office has made fiscally, beginning in fiscal year 2012, 2013, through 2021, 2022. And as you can see, 2021, 2022, we have just under $8 million in federal money coming into the Calaveras County economy from veterans' benefits alone. And it's continued to increase. We did have a little bit of a low in 1819, but surprisingly, during COVID, we continued to do our work, and we still grew. But there is, there's more to our office than just the money and the statistics. Back in, last year, I read a success story that we had printed in the annual report. But this year, I wanted to read a different kind of success story. In September of 2021, Mr. Neil Parish came to work in the Veteran Service Office as an extra hire program coordinator. Neil came to us after retiring from Calaveras County Behavioral Health earlier in the year and had also previously retired from behavioral health at VA Medical Center at Mather. In February 2022, Mr. Parish began hosting a bi-weekly veteran support group at our offices in Valley Springs. The groups are not counseling or treatment, but are simply a safe place for veterans to come and just talk to other veterans. As Neil would say, something one veteran says may help another. The group started out small with just two or three veterans showing up. However, as time went on, more began showing up. A recent group saw seven participants in session. During last year's county fair, we were approached by Supervisor Callaway asking about having a group somewhere in the Highway 4 corridor. We immediately began searching for our location and found the Ebbets Past Veterans Memorial District in Murphy's, with whom we had partnered with in the past for medical outreach. In July of 2022, Mr. Parish brought the bi-weekly veteran support group to Murphy's. The average number of attendees in the Murphy's group is currently five. Just last month, on April 3rd, Mr. Parish brought the veteran support group to Veterans in Copperopolis. We look forward to the group growing as the others have. In the words of a local Vietnam veteran, "The atmosphere is welcoming, comfortable, and informal, and is a safe place to listen and share. No judgments. We have all been there. No matter your branch of service or job, we are a brotherhood, not strangers. I belong there. I am safe and at ease. We listen and immediately understand their stories and thoughts. You learn by listening, you heal by sharing. We are brothers and sisters, body and soul. We don't wear our old veteran hats to impress. We wear them to find each other." The support groups are not the only place a veteran can talk in a safe environment. Mr. Parish also has one-on-one discussions with veterans who just need to have somebody to listen to them, someone they can trust. Mr. Parish has an uncanny ability to make veterans feel at ease. Veterans find themselves wanting to open up about their lives, and that makes all the difference to them. The success of this program in part is in part due to the hard work, dedication, and passion Mr. Parish has for working with veterans. However, it wouldn't be a success if not for the courage of the veterans who participate in the groups to just come and talk, rather than keeping to themselves. It's life-changing. We currently have veteran support groups in Valley Springs, the first and third Tuesday of every month from 1:00 to 2:30. Murphy's, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month from 1:00 to 2:30. And Copperopolis, at the Fire Protection District Building, the first and third Monday of each month, once again, from 1:00 to 2:30. And we are currently looking into interest for a new group in the Glencoe-West Point area. And Mr. Parish is also looking to develop a women's veterans group for veterans or their spouses. And to date, he has seen about 130 veterans as he's come to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Any questions from the board? Questions?
Not so much a question, just thank you for service to our veterans in the area. Yes, they're a part of your brotherhood. But, you know, these people do the work so that we can be able to have the opportunity to sit where I'm at today and be able to work with the people in the community and has preserved our rights. You know, the ongoing work from everything they've had to go through to be able to retain our rights, you know, I appreciate your work in helping them through that.
Thank you.
Comments from the public?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Corey Allen Health and Human Services Agency. As you know, the Veterans Division is a critical component within Health and Human Services. And I have to acknowledge the outstanding work this team does. They are so tiny, five people. One is out. And they are growing exponentially, and I really appreciate that effort. I know, I don't know if you stayed with it, but the Veteran Services will be at the fair this year?
Yes.
And I want to make sure that we acknowledge that, and maybe, Brian, you can finish that thought. But again, thank you for listening to this presentation, and thank you, Brian, and to the team.
Thank you. And we invite everyone, come out and see us at our booth. We'd be happy to see you.
Thank you very much, Brian, and I appreciate you working on that group up country. You're a kid from Roundwood Flat, you know where they are?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nothing else to report on this? Thank you very much. One more comment.
Good morning. My name is Susan Gleason, and I'm the Program Manager of the Adult Services Unit. And I really just wanted to highlight this veterans group. Not only do I get to lead, but I really get to walk alongside Brian and his amazing leadership. I'm learning a lot from this team, but I really wanted to highlight the work that they do every day. Brian, thank you for your amazing leadership. I want to thank Angela and Phil and Neil for the work that they do every single day. It's truly amazing, and they have such passion for the work they do. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, we are moving on to item 23. Lisa Medina.
Item 23, informational item. Environmental Management Agency receive a presentation on the new Calaveras County Animal Services Cat and Kitten Foster Program.
Good morning, everybody. Hello again. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. I would like to introduce Michael Vazquez, our Animal Services Manager, who, great kudos, foster program.
Good morning, Vice Chair Germandy, and good morning, honorable members of the board. Like Lisa said, my name is Mike Vazquez. I manage the day-to-day operations for our county animal shelter. Thank you for having us today.
So what this program entails, and you all received that information in your board packet, it's a brand-new program, something that we haven't had in 20, probably plus years, probably throughout the history of animal services. So we're real excited to be implementing this program. Some of these program objectives and goals include making sure that the cats and kittens will enable us to reduce overcrowding of the shelter and dramatically improve our standards of care and health for the animals in our custody. Some of our key goals include to raise the standards of health in animals and reduce the euthanasia of potentially adoptable animals in our care by providing them with a safe environment, less stressful, ways for them to mature and develop social skills and/or recover from injuries or illnesses. Being in an animal shelter is really stressful to animals. As a matter of fact, one of our environmental health coworkers rescued a dog up in Arnold this morning that was on the freeway about ready to get hit. So we're always consistently responding and having to react to those animals in our, in our community. It also ensures that the animals have reached the appropriate level of maturity and that they are being spayed and neutered to prevent other little unwanted kittens and cats and also dogs and puppies in our community. It also helps us to increase the adoptability of our animals by socializing them and making sure that they are ready to develop those deeper relationships with their humans. So part of the foster care program includes a couple different steps. Number one, an application process. This is our foster care application. And I'm sorry that I didn't include that in the packet. I should have done that, but that's my bad, not mine's. And so what's going to happen is the potential fosterer will submit the application to CCAS. Michael will review the application, make sure that they meet all the checks and balances. They will have to review the manual. And part of that manual that was developed includes things such as overview of the responsibilities and policies, kitten proofing. And this, I want to clarify that this particular foster program that we are implementing is for cats and kittens only at this time. We are going to be working on the puppy and dog. That takes a little bit more, a little navigation on our part, but we are moving forward with that as well. Included in that is, you know, how to socialize your cat and kitten, you know, cat-proofing a room. What are some other things?
Yeah, making sure that you have the correct items, you know, food, water bowls, litters, making sure that there's no hazards in the home. So kind of like taking a little baby home. You know, you want to make sure that they can't get into toxic chemicals or have other, other animals that may potentially injure the animal. So knowing how to introduce any foster animals to your resident pets, so that'll be important during the training and orientation, so.
And Michael will be doing the orientation and training himself. So this is going to be an event, and we're real excited about it. We, I know we have a lot of support from our community and from our board and from our stakeholders and our community focus and our volunteers, and we're real excited to do this. This will also create a little less stress, you know, on some of our volunteers and also our employees. So we're really looking forward to it. And with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Abrey.
Hi, Lisa.
Hello.
First of all, thank you so much for all the work you do. I've been by multiple times and seen how, I mean, it's amazing your passion for these animals. Could I just ask, is there a timeframe for the foster care for the dogs? Because I think they suffer far more than the cats do, just by what I'm seeing.
Well, that's something that we'll have to discuss with Michael, but we are working on it currently. We're looking for some out there, some other jurisdictions that have a program that we can kind of mull to our uniqueness as a rural county. So, Michael?
Yeah, we'll expedite that, because you're right. Right now, we do have a much larger need in our doghouse than our cat house, which is usually the opposite. But, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel for this program. So like Lisa mentioned, we're looking at other agencies so that we can take, you know, those as an example and then just, you know, tailor it to our operations. So, yeah, absolutely, we are working on that.
And we'll definitely prioritize that. We're right in the middle of kitten season, so we just started getting some of the kittens in, and a lot of people, you know, don't realize that, you know, usually when we get the kittens and the mama comes along. So mama has to be, you know, nurtured and taken care of. And then at the end of the fostering, we have to make sure that mama cat gets fixed as well.
That's if they come with mamas. Oftentimes, they're orphans, so then we're mamas.
Yes. Yeah, as I said, to share a little story on that, I received a call from Mike a few, and I called him Mike a few weeks ago, and he goes, Lisa, I've got these kittens, and I'm going to have to take them home, you know, because they have to be bottle-fed. We don't have that type of access. And so some of those kittens, you know, they have to be fed every two to three hours.
Two to three hours.
So it's very time-consuming. So that's one of the reasons why having these volunteers and these foster parents will assist us with that.
I joked, I said, they're more, they're more intense than my own kids. Thank you.
Well, thank you both very much, and congratulations. Well, thank you both very much, and congratulations on the foster program. Are there any public comments on this item? Anything online?
None online.
Thank you very much.
And we'll be back with the dog and the puppy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, okay, we're making good progress, guys. Okay, we are on item number 24. Adam Clark?
Item 24, informational item, Economic and Community Development, receive a presentation from the Economic and Community Development and the Planning Department about the Parks and Recreation Opportunities in Calaveras County and receive the Calaveras Parks and Recreation Commission's annual report.
Okay, we're going to take two minutes to set up, so stretch your legs, start up in a second. We are on item number 24. Do we already read that?
Yes, I can redo it again.
Go ahead. Kathy? Gabriel?
Good morning, Vice Chair, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. To my left, I have Gabriel Elliott, who is our Planning Director, and I want to say good morning.
Good morning, Acting Chair, Members of the Board. Teresa?
Sarah?
Members of the audience. Gabriel Elliott, Planning Director.
Here we go. All right, today's presentation, we have some very interesting and timefull information to share with you, including our current park situation here in Calaveras County, comparison of similar counties, like counties, and what they're doing for their Parks and Recreation Program, various funding models, sports and recreation tourism opportunities, dedicated park land and park and loofes when we have developments, also needs analysis and some partnership opportunities and ideas to consider, discussion of options and considerations for future direction and guidance. Also today, I've included the annual report by the Calaveras Parks and Recreation Commission to try and keep things as consolidated and moving forward as possible. Then we'll have questions and answers, of course. So the first thing that we did is we looked at the various parks that are within Calaveras County that we have control of. Alex Quinones Park, which is located right across Mountain Ranch Road here in San Andreas, we have a 20-year lease with San Andreas Rexon Park District, and for $0.00 a year. In that agreement, they're responsible for operations and maintenance of the park at the surface level. There's also the Plug Ugly Mine that is located in that site, at that site, that location, as well as the Disc Golf, which again, San Andreas Rexon Park takes care of the Disc Golf, but the county's responsible for the mine, which is not an active mine, obviously, but it's still there. We have done some improvements, the county has, through a Prop 68 grant that is still in process, $70,000 was awarded to them, and that is to replace ballfield fencing, to put in a pickleball court, and to also put in a playground structure. San Andreas Rexon Park does sublease that site to Calaveras Baseball, Calaveras High School Baseball, $500 a season lease, so it's a year during ball season, and the San Andreas Rexon Park District is an all-volunteer organization. So as we're going through this, you're going to see there's various different models for the different parks, the different agreements that we have with the different organizations. Next, we have Nielsen Park, also in San Andreas, which is the small park in the historic section of San Andreas. We have a 20-year lease with San Andreas Rexon Park District for $1.00 a year. We found that there was public benefit by having them manage and maintain the park. They do lease that to the San Andreas Rotary Club, it was very popular this last, or a couple of weekends ago, during the Rage and Cajun Fest, and they've done some great improvements there. They do the trash service, they're painting, they're keeping the park clean and pruned, and so that's a real plus, because that park was pretty sketchy there for a while. Next, we have the Mountain Ranch Community Park in Mountain Ranch. We have five-year lease agreements with two various, two different organizations, one being the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance, who manages what's the former school of the Mountain Ranch Peace, and then the Mountain Ranch Community Club, which manages the park and the ballfields. We have those two different community groups that each rent for $1.00 a year. Again, we found public benefit finding because they manage and maintain those properties and mowing and watering and all the various things. I also was able to get some information regarding what their annual resources or income are from the various events that they hold. So for Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance, they have about a $22,000 annual revenue. Mountain Ranch Community Club, it's unknown at this time, they have done some various car shows, they did a seed exchange program, craft fairs, and some other things. I was not able to get all that information. I think that they've been pretty busy trying to get caught up with weather and spring and a lot of maintenance at the park. Next, we have Murphy's Park. This is a 25-year lease with Murphy's Community Club. They're responsible for maintenance and collects all the revenue from special events and park rental. The county's responsible for utilities, so this is a different one, totally different model. The county's responsible for their power, their water, their sewer, solid waste, and telephone. That costs the county about $14,415 a year. And I did get some stats from Carol Roselli this morning, obviously I couldn't get them into the slide presentation for that, but their annual revenue is about $22,000 a year. Again, all volunteer staff, and they do a lot of work and great things out of that park. Next, we have Railroad Flat Community Center, which is our newest acquisition that we have, and park and community center. This is a five-year lease with Blue Mountain Community Renewal Council for $1.00 a year. This is also a project, a Prop 68 project of $300,000, where BM CRC is responsible for all utilities and maintenance, and the county has retained 350 square feet approximately of part of that facility for use to be determined in the future. And we have an offset for common space maintenance areas, the common space maintenance areas of $250 a month for that square footage that we have. So the county cost on that is about $3,000 a year. We don't, being that the project is so new, we are unsure as to what their annual revenues will be, what the future growth of that site will be, and the various opportunities. I do want to make a note that some of these parks do receive some facilities maintenance assistance. We've had incidences where there's an emergency, and we've had to deal with a water issue or a line issue, but they're one-off emergency repairs. But for the most part, the county's model is that we have agreements with the various community organizations, and they in turn are responsible for maintenance and repair of the facilities. Now I'd like to look at what some other counties are doing. So in Amador County, again, a similar-sized population as us, they have a joint powers authority and a special district. What's interesting about Amador County is they actually have five incorporated cities, whereas Calaveras only has one. So they've got a more robust group of participants and funding opportunities. They have multiple programs, they have recreational pools, they have parks, they have impact fees, mitigation fees. Bingo, they partner with the schools. They developed a mitigation for park dedication in lieu of $3,200 per house that's constructed. You can see that their budget and funding, they have a $400,000 annual budget, a $6.50 per person assessment as our regional impact fees. Their annual budget is about $1.07 million, and they have four full-time employees. Toallami County has a dedicated county recreation department, they have sports fields, facilities for rent, camping, youth centers, aquatics, et cetera. I want to emphasize the camping piece. The one thing Calaveras does not have is camping, where we actually collect camping fees and other types of recreation. Toallami County's budget is $700,000 a year, their revenue is about $150,000. And the interesting thing about this particular county is that they received a $400,000 grant for a drought tolerance grant. They actually had an old reservoir that they resurrected for recreation, camping, boating, I don't know about motorboat, but it's a small reservoir, but they were able to revive that site and make it a money maker. And they have four full-time positions paid. Siskiyou County has no programs. They have three Parks and Rec districts, and Mount Shasta has three parks, Dunsmere has six parks, and Weed has five parks. So this was a totally different model than what I've seen at some of the other sites. The city of Eureka is, their Parks Program is under their Public Works, which is common in some small rural counties. They also revitalized an old reservoir for water storage, and they're looking at actually establishing a benefit assessment district with enterprise funds for future funding and moving forward. So since they don't have a county program, I looked at their Parks and Recreation Districts. So for Mount Shasta, they have a $1.4 million budget, for Dunsmere, $1.38. And Mount Shasta, I didn't want to put too much detail, I know this is probably too much detail already, but between those three Parks Districts, they have 11 full-time staff. They've got a lot of recreation. Again, it's a tourism-based area, there's recs, there's camping, there's quite a bit to do. Then the city of Eureka, I dropped, I put down on the bottom there, they have a $475 annual budget, $300,000 grant for their rehabbing of an old reservoir, and they have three full-time employees. So the last two that I looked at were Lassen County, their Parks and Recreation is under their Public Works Department, they have two large and small, two large and four smaller parks, kind of similar to Calaveras County. Their Buildings and Grounds does all the maintenance, so they do not have lease agreements or any other type of agreements with community organizations to offset those maintenance costs. They're responsible for electrical as well. They do partner with BLM, which I find very interesting, because BLM should be one of our partners here in Calaveras County, as well as some others. I do have a Parks Dedication for their housing element and their housing developments. I was able to get that information, because their Planning Director was actually out on leave when I put this slide deck together. They have a $290,000 annual budget, they have $166,000 in revenue, and one full-time position. So as you're seeing, there's various levels of funding, various levels of revenue generation, and various levels of staffing. The last one I looked at was Mendocino County, not exactly like Calaveras County, but I really wanted to look at something a little bit more rural, maybe a little bit, obviously more population, and their Parks Program is under their general services. County Facilities maintains three parks, reviewing, they're actually reviewing their 2020 needs under their Master Parks Agreement or their Master Parks Development Plan. Obviously Mendocino County, we know, lots of camping, lots of parking, lots of things to do. They have a budget of $320,000, but their revenue is only $14,000 from their camping and parking, because most of it is pretty inexpensive, and they only have one full-time staff. Overnight camping, as I said, is their primary revenue source, but they are going back to the Board in 2023 in May, so I'm not sure if that might actually be today. The other great thing I want to point out is I got to talk to a lot of great people in talking to these various counties. I got a lot of connections with people, and some of them are like, "Calaveras County?" So that was exciting to, like, let them know that this is something that we're very serious about, that we care about, that we want to make these improvements for our community. So I'm not sure when I turn it over to you, Gabriel.
What's the next?
I think this is funding models, and I think this is the answers. I haven't been looking at my notes, I'm sorry, guys. So, as I mentioned, the funding models have been kind of varied in these counties. Many have joint powers authorities, they have, you know, special districts, municipalities, they partner with BLM and California Parks and Schools and share contributions and collective funding. Other ideas that we've seen are benefit assessment district, impact user fees, and also enhanced park and loofes, which Gabriel and I, Gabriel's going to talk more about here shortly. There's also user fees and rental fees. We don't collect those fees currently, they are given to or allowed to be used by those entities that are managing our parks on our behalf. Revenue-sharing agreement with nonprofit organizations, but that would be very, very challenging, because most of our nonprofits that are managing these parks have struggled very, very hard, not just because of COVID, just because it's hard to make money when you're trying to do community events. So other funding models, and this has been discussed through the SURF, which is the Community Economic Resilience Fund, which is a seven-county consortia here in the Central Sierra, is looking at potentially using SURF funding as climate resiliency and also for economic development to do more regional parks, and some of these centers that could help generate revenue and do great things, and also grants for the Park Master Plans. So we'll talk a little bit more about the Parks Master Plan coming up, but also looking at evaluating other grants, such as the drought tolerance grants. I looked all over Calaveras, we don't have any old reservoirs laying around, so, but if, you know, if we could find something creative like that. But, you know, developing off-highway vehicle, attractions, camping, RV hookups. I was even thinking, God, we could have RV hookups at Alex Quinones Park, we might be able to use that during a resiliency or an emergency, but, you know, it's just, we have to start thinking outside of the box. I will tell you that the 2023 grant cycle has closed, but we're gearing up for 2024. We need to be ready with a list of projects and ideas and priorities. Now it's you.
Hi, Members of the Board. To put it really mildly, I think we have a challenge. And the challenge is that we are in Calaveras County, people come here for the beauty of the county, we have lots of open space, we, you know, we have trail systems, but most of them are held under private ownership. So if you are a resident of Calaveras County, as well documented, recreational opportunities like a community park or a neighborhood park are very, very limited. Now, luckily enough, we, the Quimby Act allows the county to either collect fees in lieu of parkland dedication as part of a subdivision, or actually have parkland dedication as part of our subdivision ordinance. The problem, though, is that we sometimes haven't really collected those fees or have really miscalculated how those fees, you know, what actually we should collect. So we don't have parkland, park areas that could be used by the general public, hence we have these negotiations with, you know, with school districts and/or vice versa. And I think that needs to change. I think we need to start looking very, very hard at being known as not only a very beautiful community, but also a community that fosters recreation. And by that I mean, we need to have community parks in neighborhoods, we need to have small little parks for other purposes, because we have the means to do that, and, you know, state law allows us to do that through the Quimby Act. One of the things that I think, even if we didn't want to try, that we could actually explore, is maybe becoming a sports park. is, is maybe becoming a, a, a sports park community. You know, we, we, we have areas that are kind of in the outlying sections of our county that are adjacent to some more metropolitan areas where people, if we had a series of, um, you know, six baseball fields or six soccer fields or, or whatever sports we choose, we become a destination for that. We become a destination for that. It increases our opportunities uh to have a people come to our county, uh, stay in our county, spend money in our county, then we become recognized for that. But that's really going to take an effort and that effort really lies in being able to have a parks master plan that identifies all these goals and policies. Now, it's not a really pie in the sky thing. Uh, I know we have some challenges that we have to overcome. Um, you know, with, with, with budgeting and so on and so forth, but I think we need to make uh this a priority. Uh, the second thing I think we need to do is, uh, we need to take an inventory of all the fees that have been collected, not very much uh to date. Right. If, uh, I mean, this is, this is how we.
This is the formula. And I mean, I, I was never a math major, but I had a heck of a time with it.
Right. So uh, the, uh, chapter sixteen, twenty-four, zero, three, zero actually gives us how we can actually make a determination on whether or not we're going to collect uh in lieu fees for parks or park dedication. Uh, parkland dedication. The parkland dedication part is really not that difficult. However, when somebody dedicates parkland and that parkland is behind a gated community, it becomes sort of a challenge if that parkland is really not available to members of the entire community. And if we are collecting park in lieu fees, I mean, we, we had a six-unit subdivision the other day and this person, just because of the size of the, of the subdivision, they figured, well, we'll just pay, pay the park fees. They paid us the park fees and nobody knew which account to put it in because we, it's not something that we've actually done on a regular basis. So not only are we not being good stewards of, of the resources that, you know, that, that are, that are, that are placed in our hands. We, we, we're not, uh, it, it affects our, our, our ability to actually get to the goal, which is we want to have park space for, for the majority of our, of our population. There are two park districts in the county according to our general plan. The one is in San Andreas and the other one is, is Jenny Lynn. Those are the two identified in the general plan as, as, as park districts that we actually have. And we have more than two uh distinct areas of this community that need to be served with, with parks and recreation services. Um, the, the, the formula you have in front of you is basically when you have less than a fifty-unit subdivision, you are encouraged to pay park fees. Uh, you know, the county can, you can either pay park fees or dedicate the land or do both. So we chose you pay park fees if you have less than fifty-unit subdivision. But then we need to make sure that when we calculate those fees, they actually uh, would generate substantial revenue for us to be able to go out and let's say we want to purchase land. Uh, you know, a lot of our vacant lands, as you well know, are either, um, you know, in conservation easements and things of that nature. But there might still be some opportunities uh to pick up, to pick up parkland properties. But I think from a recreation standpoint, it is one of those things that I would encourage the board to really take a very close look at so that we can provide this particular uh amenity for members of our community. What is the next?
The next slide talks about the need to update.
Right. So um, I was speaking to Mr., uh, sixteen, twenty-four, chapter sixteen actually falls within the public works uh code because it's part of our subdivision. So, and the, 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 the need to update how we actually allocate, uh, not how we allocate the fees, but, but how we, what we collect is basically established by the Quimby Act. For every thousand population we have, we can ask for as many as three acres, yeah, as low as three acres and as high as five acres. Most communities range between that three and three point five. We are at two point five for, for every, two point five acres of land for every one thousand population that we have in our county. Uh, and um, and you know, as I alluded to earlier, uh, for a county that has such immense open space, I, I, I think we can, I think we can, uh, we can do better. Not only allocating designated, uh, designating uh park area through a parks master plan, but also uh being able to uh collect the funds that are necessary for us to actually go out and purchase parkland in case we have to.
And one of the things I want to point out, this is actually out of the actual ordinance. And I guess when this ordinance was written, I believe it was two thousand eight, we actually had a community development department, which I wasn't aware of. So, um, and that part of the recommendations also come from the Parks and Rec Commission, which we do have commissioners here. So that we probably need to look at that, work closely with our public works folks and see if we can get that modernized. Needs analysis and partnerships. Do you want me to take that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have a few minutes. I'll do it. So, um, and having conversations, excuse me, um, with various folks in our commission, on our commission. Um, it's imperative that we develop a master plan, I believe. Um, in two thousand eight, we started with an interim document that's about this thick. Two thousand twelve, we had a draft document that was put together by the Calaveras County Parks and Rec Commission. It's about half that thick, um, but it never got approved or adopted by the board. Um, it's not something that I think we can do internally. I think it's something we need to do externally or look at community partners to help us with. It was done initially by the Calaveras Parks and Rec Commissioners. Um, the document was drafted that way. Um, and then having conversations with our council of government spokes. They've been very active, especially in the bikes and pedestrian pathways program. We need to roll that information into a parks master plan, also looking at the general plan and making sure we capture all the pieces that we need to have a document that A, will point us in the direction we need to go, make a list of priorities and to identify funding to go each of those as we have these funding streams that come down year after year. Um, we need to consider looking at improving our existing parks for revenue generation. We really need lights in our parks. I've talked to so many people about, why don't we have lights? Why don't we have ball fields at night? Why don't? Uh-oh. Um, and also pathways, connecting pathways to various amenities and features. Evaluate new recreational, recreational opportunities. And again, this is the challenge that we're going to be, we're going to be working at. Um, but trying to find spaces, working with other of our community members like CCWD, who does have open space, Brett Hart has some open space, extra space. Um, that they may be considering surplus in those lands and developing those partnerships and looking at those opportunities for various, you know, new things. Um, we always hear off, off-road, off-highway vehicles are very popular, soccer fields, basketball courts, archery, camping. There's, there's, the list can go on. Again, parks master plan will help us define what we're looking for specifically and going after it. And then supporting a dynamic Parks and Recreation Commission with, and community input, of course. Um, continuing on the partnerships, funding and capacity. We know this is a challenge. Um, obtaining and administering grants, funding sources through partnerships, as I mentioned before. Um, developing, I kind of got ahead of myself because I'm so excited about the parks master plan. Um, but then creating new, new relationships, whether it's through utility providers, whether it's through our state parks partners, our BLM partners. Um, there's a list that we really need to reach out to and start working with and seeing how we can put something together more collaboratively. And again, there's decisions that you guys will be making in the future, not today. We're just here for information. But, um, you know, helping set that direction on how we do that. Do we have a, a parks department or a parks joint powers authority? But we need to continue those discussions. Um, as Gabriel and I have talked, we're like, okay, let's, what would a parks master plan look like? What would it cost? Um, we're ballparked about seventy-five thousand dollars, um, looking at grant funding that could help us get through that and get that done. Um, revising chapter sixteen point two four, which Gabriel just mentioned. And making it so it's easier to use and more clear for our developers. Um, identify no and no, no and low-cost uh grant match opportunities where we can use in-kind or volunteer staff, volunteer folks to help with that. Um, but at this point, you know, given our situation, we're okay. I mean, we're not great, but there's not been a huge impact to our general fund from our agreements that we have with our community partners at this time. Um, we kind of have a good model that we've been using for a long time, but we may want to move forward and do better. So I will pause there for questions and conversations before we do the, the Seapark Annual Report.
Let's keep going, sweetie.
Okay, okay. Um, so twenty-one through twenty-two, this is the Calaveras Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Report. Um, Ms. Corey Fisk is here, but the summary is it was a disappointing year. Um, we had a challenging time getting and retaining commissioners on the various seats. Um, we were unable to establish a forum about four times last year. Um, there's a feel of lack of support and funding to get things done in the various districts. So the Parks and Rec Commission District is comprised of a representative from each one of your districts, each one of the super presidential districts, a representative, a representative from CCWD, Calaveras County Water District, and also a representative from San Andreas Rec and Park District.
And they are volunteers.
And they're all volunteers. So, um, so many opportunities are falling by the wayside, such as lighting for parks, as I mentioned, parks and recreation improvements, um, parkland acquisition, Caperopolis is one that comes up routinely, as well as the Valley Springs or Lake Hogan property that CCWD has. There's property there. Um, it would be a good fit potentially, potentially, um, to develop for Parks and Recreation. But there's an ability for improvement and I'm really, really pleased to say that our commissioners are very committed. We have a full um, commission. They're very active. They're very engaged. Um, and they're really, you know, supportive, supportive of the county and they have a lot of history. So we have the ability to improve. We have the ability to develop those relationships. Um, they would like to see some sort of part-time park supervisor and apply for more grants and establish a budget. So that is what I have.
So I gotta remember to turn on the microphone. But what I want to, um, so, but what I think we're going to try to accomplish here is you guys, you know, obviously received the report. I'd like to hear from the commissioners who are here. And then I'm assuming you are seeking some sort of direction from the board.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So I will as chair try to drive us towards a direction as we get to these questions. But before we start, our commissioners are in the room. Would you guys like to add to this report before we start asking our questions?
Gomani, Corey Fisk, Chair. Welcome. It's nice to meet you. Uh, I will compound on the disappointing year that we had. And I know that, um, the report says a part-time supervisor, but my personal opinion is that if we are going to be able to develop an opportunity for someone to manage these grants, write these grants, be able to communicate in-house with other department heads in order for us to be able to collect the fees that are owed to this area of the county's number one economic resource and for us to stay focused on these recreational uh events, activities and parks, then we need to have somebody in-house who's going to manage that. And the master plan is critical, but if you have a plan and no one to implement it, it makes it spent money again for nothing that ends up taking care of anything. So I feel like we have a really strong team in place now. We have three commissioners who came in the last meeting who are, who are new, but not new to the county and the things that, challenges that we have here in the county, county. And they are very experienced people. So I feel really, really good about the participation that we're going to be getting from this point forward. So.
Um, if you want, you could stand up there. Are we asking questions as well?
That's fine.
Can you raise a stopper or you can sit down? We'll go bring them back to the board. Questions from the board.
Um, well, quite a few things because I think, you know, uh, the, a few points were hit, hit, hit on throughout this. We, we talked about off-road and OHV being popular in the county. And then also Mr. Gabriel Elliott brought up the fact that a lot of the uh land that these type of events would work on is private land. Uh, moving forward, I think that it would be a good idea for us to uh reconsider our special event permit ordinance and incorporate opportunities with it. You know, there's going to be some type of EIR that's going to have to go into this for impacts on it. And I think, uh, well, when, when it comes to allowing permits on certain types of property, when it comes to OHV and uh, I saw you thinking, Sarah, so I'm being more explicit. So that, you know, it's, when, when we get into thinking about special event permit process, you know, if we can incorporate the, uh, an EIR of some sort to allow for these events uh, at a limited basis across the county, when it comes to private property, I think that would help quite a bit to that point. We, you brought up partnership, partnerships with other organizations. CCWD has that land in the Valley Springs area. Now, you know, Rancho and District Five doesn't have a whole lot of opportunity when it comes to land that's going to be worked for uh specifically parks. But Valley Springs does. And those two communities are close enough together that it benefits both districts in the area that is most populated within the county and benefits the most people at one time. So moving forward with those partnerships, Army Corps of Engineers, CCWD, um, you know, East Bay Mud for Par- Party and, and Comanche. Uh, and the opportunities they have with land that we could partnership with them for, for parks and recreation on both sides. Uh, it is a great thing and, you know, CCWD does have that plant property right in the middle of Valley Springs down there. That would be optimal from my opinion for a park that benefits well over thirteen to fourteen thousand people in a small area. Um, also on a, you know, something I've had a lot of thoughts about budget, which is a big deal because we aren't getting anywhere without dollars. I have a few ideas I would like to talk to the CEO separate on shift on funds with opportunities that we could actually, you know, because we can talk about the grants and the money coming in and the need for someone to put in that position, but if we don't put seed money there and start that process going forward, we're just talking about it. You know, and so we need to find that money somewhere to get the process going so we can find more opportunities that will work with economic development and the planning department and our Parks and Rec Commission moving forward. I have a lot more ideas, but that's in a nutshell. I think that, you know, we, we talked about two districts, San Andreas Rec and Jenny Lynn, which is the Veterans District. San Andreas is very, very outgoing and they do a great job for San Andreas. The Jenny Lynn Veterans District is more focused on, you know, their, their, uh, their, their, their hall down there and the, the fields many times come up short. So we need to rethink on the structure possibly for the Valley Springs area when it comes to a district that can help facilitate these type of facilities. And I just want to thank you, Corey, because consistently I know it's hard being, you know, because you don't see the support coming from this end, but you have been a strong advocate and I appreciate the work that you do and, you know, and the, the good thought and everything going into it. So I, I hope more commissioners get on the commission that can follow your lead. So I hope more commissioners get on the commission that can follow your lead, and we can help facilitate getting more help coming from this end so that we can be successful with you moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It is a volunteer situation, and so the ability to really have external time to be able to work on implementation of a lot of this is what the problem really is. And just identifying even in the Jenny Lynn district, you know, that's over 39 acres that we have, but it's in an area that could be considered unsafe. It's dark back there. There's, you know, not observation that can happen. And, you know, they're, they are dealing with a vet's hall that has a lot of things to fix. And so trying to get through all of those issues is really important. But on what's something that you said is I think that we sometimes often move into thinking Parks and Rec, oh, it's just a Parks Commission. But, you know, even Hogan has a lot of opportunities for being able to build recreational opportunities of safety training or boating training or things that we could offer. And some of these examples of these other Parks and Recs that are local around here, even, you know, El Dorado Hills or some of the ones that Kathy was able to identify in Mariposa, have very successful Parks and Recs that go outside of just a park that we're dealing with. And so hoping to keep some of that in mind and some of that becoming available when we build out a master plan. I just also want to talk about the, having our own department and realizing that, you know, maybe we can't afford to have somebody full-time, and the reason why part-time even comes into it is because Go Calveras has a really strong presence that promotes Calveras. And if we had an opportunity to be able to put someone in place who could collaborate or coordinate with that effort, then I could see the two of that, those positions being able to establish movement that at least is able to work off some of the budget and then still be able to create a synergy that allows that department person to be able to be very successful.
Okay. I'm gonna try to wrap this meeting up by lunch when they jump frogs. I got a couple items. Let me keep things moving along here. Other board member questions? Okay, well, sorry, Corey.
It's okay.
Okay, we may have to. Sorry, gentlemen. I'm sorry, Corey, please continue.
That's okay. The only last thing that I had is that, you know, it's been really disappointing to hear that we have a grant writer that's working for us at Parks and Rec because it just has not felt like that. And as soon as they were hired, they started working on other departments' grants. And my thing was, that's fine, but then bring us in so that we can collaborate on potential joint venture projects for like the Operation Emergency Services and bringing those lights to those baseball parks that could be used as locations for helicopter lay or emergency situations or anything. So it just, you're not gonna get any grant writing from me or the other people that are on the volunteer commission, so if I'm not grant writing, then who is? And so that's the only money that's been servicing our commission at this point in time. And so, yeah, it does sometimes feel like we don't have support. So I don't want to sound ungracious, but...
I think you just reiterated what I said when I talked about actually shifting funds to actually getting the person and having seed money there so we can move forward with that type of thing. So I hear what you're saying, and I've continued to hear it.
I appreciate it.
I'm very glad that you've been the representative from my district, Corey, because, you know, you tell the truth as you see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a lot of questions, and I don't, I hope I don't come off as sounding questioning what all the research you guys have. I just have follow-up questions, and I realize that you may not have the answers, but just something to think about. One of the biggest things that have been in this presentation is a master plan. Board of Supervisors has never adopted a master plan. So the question to staff is, how do we even go and apply for these grants when there is no master plan or vision? Because that is one of the primary checkmarks on these grant applications and parks and that. I mean, you have got to have, we've got to have that. So I know you've asked for that money to support that, but I'm not comfortable going down another, going down all these other rabbit holes until we know what we are gonna be selling, what are we asking for at the, at the grant application levels, whether it be at the state or federal levels or any other opportunities that are out there. I want to make sure that we're all on the same plan and we know what we are applying for when we go, and if we start to go down the path of park land and new fees. I mean, how do you service to developers if we don't even know what we want ourselves? So I'm open to these other ideas, but I think starting first, I really would like to see the board adopt a master plan and get the community involved in incorporating all of these things across the county. And it's not just park structures. As Ben mentioned, it's the OHV, you know, we've got so many other things that we can bring in. The other concern I have of the parks and new fee is in my district, we've got nine HOAs. The county has created the mentality they never wanted to provide parks, and in lieu of that, they have pushed that on to the HOAs. So HOAs are already collecting that, and one of the, or some type of, within their HOAs, so for example, Black Creek, you know, that is funded by the HOA. That is a membership-only driven. So how, when we go into some of these communities, especially if they have a majority of HOAs, how are we gonna go ask them to now add another fee when they are already providing some of these privatized parks, which is the problem, you know, and that's why we are here? So how, what are some other solutions we can look into? Because I know those very constituents are asking for public park and, you know, soccer fields and things they cannot already provide or don't have the land within their HOAs, but I just have a concern about that, and I just want to make sure that we are thinking about that as you go down on how we're gonna find a revenue stream. In District Four, Ben mentioned CCWD, same thing, there's CCWD. There is also over 50 acres of public school land as well. There'd be, there's a lot of opportunities. I think if that was going to be something looked at down in the D4 area, but I also recognize that, again, HOA and TRIDAM have provided those opportunities as well. The other thing, talking about Parks and Rec district, is there a thought process with staff to consider making one Parks and Rec district and going through the LACCO process for all of the parks and then figuring out a fee structure per capita within that? Because I'm, how are we going to manage at a staff level that many districts, you know, across the board and then having competing? And it just sounds like a lot of work budgetary. So is there an opportunity to explore maybe one district where that goes in and then you assess it at a per capita area? I don't know what that looks like, but it sounds like it's gonna be a LACCO, a LACCO process if we need to go down that. And one of the things I didn't see in the presentation was concession opportunities. I didn't see that mentioned. So is that something that we can explore, you know, not only outside of volunteer, but is there a concession to allow, to support smaller businesses in the community and go that avenue for some of these private lands? And what would that look like? And then also partnering up with these community groups for funding opportunities. You know, being personally involved with the Utica Park, I mean, that's how it all started, was a concert, literally a concert in the park that we had that raised the seed money for a grant writer, and then as a result, what, five, seven years later, $3 million? And it all started with a partnership and figuring out how within the policies to partner up and support these communities to raise the funding with the backing of the local government. And I think that might even be something to, you know, Corey's point, you know, if we've got to do that, I will go back to another park concert and help fundraise money so we can get a grant writer and pay for somebody to do that. I mean...
But that's like my question, though, is that as a volunteer, who's gonna implement that policy? Is it going to be Kathy, who's economic director, who's been kind enough to be able to kind of intercede for us as a commission? Because it technically isn't going to be anyone on the commission.
Yeah, we know that, and that...
The process would be going through the planning department to implement the policy and bring it before the board, and we do that. You know, that would be part of our direction if the board so decides to give it.
And then last is, as we go through this and we start working on a master plan, how are we being, what is the word I'm looking for? Compete, I guess, with the current recreation opportunities surrounding us? So we don't create, competition is always great, but we don't want to outcompete, compete with our partners. So how do we, how do we become compatible with them? Because they have their own thing, they're trying to do their own revenue, but these same agencies were acting to also partnership with them. So how do we make sure that we're meeting a mission that benefits both of those partnerships without competing? That's all I got. Thank you.
Supervisor, how about it?
Can I just add one quick note? You did bring up camping, and I just wanted to bring up that I think that Calaveras should look into camping and collecting on camping. Tuolumne does, and I think that there's money there. Thank you.
Just to hit on that point, we've discussed it before quite a few times, and a majority of the camping areas are on either federal land or land that's not owned by Calaveras County. So at that rate, we don't have the opportunity to collect on those, but at that point, we would have to think about getting our own land or, you know, how we would do that.
Okay. I've got a couple of points, not so much questions, but this is clearly an item of priority for our strategic plan for our county. We spent two years coming up with this plan, voted on it, this is in here. It's one of the few things that is actually named in here. And I think we'll, I'm gonna take everybody through the list of items that I've heard, and then we'll do it the same way we did several years ago. We'll see if there's three votes or three influences that might be good for giving direction to the staff or getting some things started. Better, Counselor? Thank you. But I do think, I think, you know, to Ben and Corey and I think everybody's point here, it starts with money. We're just talking. All these other counties that you put up there, they're all contributing to this. I understand taking on things like our fees, but there's no large developments that are coming that are gonna bankrupt us. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to do this on the back of developers, future growth. We have to do it ourself. And if this is a priority, we need to fund it. I have, like Supervisor Stopper, we probably have different ideas, but we both have ideas of where this could be funded from. And I think we have to make a commitment to it. We do a lot of things in this county using general fund dollars that are not in our strategic plan. So it's not a question of money, it's a question of priority. If we're doing things that aren't part of our plan and we're not doing things that are part of our plan because we don't have the money, we need to reallocate funds. Hurts people's feelings, but this is the plan we came up with. So with that in mind, I'm gonna sort of go through here and see what support to give direction to our staff is. First one, let's just start with the easy one. Does this board want to direct staff to seek out funding, at least for a period of time, nothing's permanent, I hate using permanent funding, for a period of time in order to actually hire an FTE and fund getting this program going? Probably, let's just say it's $200,000. Is there direction from this board for the county administration to find that money?
I would be open to looking at, to discussions that budget.
Right, absolutely. It's all gonna come to... So we're directing County Administrative Office to find money to make this permanent vision.
I think what I heard from Manos more to the point of bring the discussion to us and have some recommendations to that point.
I think that's good.
I think that's a good way to put it.
That gives us all time to submit our list to the administrative, whatever it is. Okay, so we've got direction to find, see if we could find funding and options on how we would find that if we did do that. During budget?
Yes.
Okay, great. We have a suggestion by Supervisor Stopper to revise the special event permits. Stop, we wanna make that, sorry, would you like to say something?
So one of the things, and I don't know if this is one of your points that you're going to bring up, but it seems as though we should begin with the beginning, which is we really need a Parks Master Plan so that we can take a look at all of the assets, the partnerships, all of the things that we have in this county currently before we hire someone to implement a plan that we don't have.
I would, I think that's a good discussion point, but I would argue that we've been doing that for three times and it hasn't worked. So until we have somebody who's accountable and is gonna do the work, it should be part of the budget. That $75,000, I would think, should be part of whatever budget you're going to present to us. But no, I'm not about re-studying things. Sky's blue, we know that.
I think where we are starting to feel after the last couple of years and going through this strategic plan is we, staff is already overworked. And so is there an opportunity to look into hiring somebody to offset, so we don't add another project on top of fleet and all the other things and admin office? So we would like to explore adding somebody else to your office to help support this, if it is possible, through the budget. And they can work on the master plan, and then they can be the go-to person for the whole thing, is what I believe we're all trying to get to, because that has been the key element of why nothing has gotten done.
I agree with Ms. Fullnord 100%, and I would change Mr. Garamini's recommendation on the full FTE, because with something like this, in the beginning especially, I mean, the full FTE is not, because that person's not gonna be busy the full-time working on just this, because it's gonna be the master plan. So like a half FTE to work with something else that still helps out the administrative office at the same time, so that we, they can dedicate the person's time properly initially.
I'm gonna go back to Corey's comment. We did that, and it failed miserably.
Well, they never really dedicated that person to that.
Because they took him and did something else on another project, and it wasn't very clear, and they, we hired him, and they never did it.
This is a brand-new program.
Can you, can you, can you let me finish?
Supervisor Stopper, finish your stop.
Because they had asked for that FTE and the part of it, and it was never implemented by administration in that manner. It was never put up like that. They talked about it, they wanted it, and then administration's like, we need this grant writer, we're gonna bring in this grant writer, and that grant writer was never intended to help them out, not even for a half FTE. It wasn't even written down in the budget like that.
Supervisor Fullner, do you have something you want to add?
We can agree how it happened internally, but the point was, is we all voted for it to be directly for the Parks and Rec Commission, and the powers did not enforce it. And so I think what, to alleviate the concerns, so we don't repeat history, is to make it very clear in how that is and that they are for Parks and Rec.
This person will be developing a brand-new department for you, so systems and policies and everything will need to be implemented, and so there will be a significant amount of work that needs to be done.
If I could add one thing to possible responsibilities, because we, fortunately, Corey, everybody was up, we had a meeting in District Two about Parks and Rec when we were dealing with Verifile, and it is remarkable the diversity of what people believe Parks and Rec is. So there is no lack of opportunity. It was everything from senior yoga in your chair, so people are moving, to off-road, horseback riding, motorcycles, to professional soccer fields and baseball. I mean, it just, it is, we, we, it is a big job to get this in line, and we commit to it, which means we get a good person who's willing to commit full-time to get this going, or we stumble along as we have for the last 20 years. Okay, so... Okay, so. Okay, next one, special events permits. Is there, does everybody want to take that on? Thumbs up or down? Want to revise special event permits?
We, we need to, regardless.
I would like to see a subcategory to address these kinds of things, yes. So I am on board with that.
Great. We talked about, as part, when we get someone on board, we talked, supervisor Stopper suggested that we begin seeking a regional park. There you go, that right? What do we, what do we think about that? Should we make that one of the priorities for coming on? Okay. We've got supervisor Follendorf suggested that we need to complete the master plan as quickly as possible. That seems like a logical and reasonable thing to do. Okay. We have complexity around the HOA fees and how we made, you know, how we built this rubric. Yeah, I mean, that doesn't work. So we can't fix past them. We should plan forward. Supervisor Follendorf is a very good idea. Supervisor Follendorf suggested that we consider a single Parks and Rec district for the county. What do you guys think?
I, I think that it's a good idea, at the same time, without it taking from the ones that have been successful like San Andreas. So the consideration of the ones that are being successful and already have things unstated, I mean, we can't take from them.
Not to, we don't want it to be a zero-sum game. If it's a cat, you know, want to take away from Mo Killbats, who does a great, do a great job. But if, if that makes sense, obviously, it sounds like your board is open to that. And that's going to include LAFCO, to your point. And obviously, the philosophy, I think we'd all agree, we don't want to hurt other partners and parks. Missing anything?
I have one. Can we add to that list? We've been talking about creating a new department. So before we jump the gun, can we explore that and have that brought back on what that organization structure is going to look like? I, I know what we all vision, but we might need to have something on the agenda to further discuss that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and to piggyback, and I think supervisor Follendorf already mentioned this, but just to reiterate, you know, with, with the question of potentially creating another district or one big district, or whatever that might look like, you know, that would have to go through the LAFCO, and, and there's a whole process for that, obviously. And, you know, I don't, to me, that may be something that comes out of the master plan. Like, the master plan might dictate, what do we want this to look like? What structure makes sense? But again, just a reminder that we'll have to go through the LAFCO process to the extent we're talking about dissolving, rearranging, or creating new special districts.
It gets really complicated when it comes to area of influence and everything else that's already been drawn up and others.
We have, it sounds like we have some direction for the CIO. Obviously, we're going to, before we approve any department or funds, that will be part of our budget discussion for June. And I'm sure we've all got ideas where the money is for this. So you get to sort us out. Are there items that, from, from staff or our volunteer board commissioners that we're missing that we need to consider to give direction on?
I'm just ecstatic right now, so everything you said is what I want to hear. So I'm super excited for the support. I think it's the best thing for Calaveras, and we really, really appreciate it.
Mike Commissioner, have anything she wants to add?
Yes.
Thumbs up from Commissioner Allen. Thank you guys very much. Ladies and gentlemen, are we missing anything here? Staff, give me more direction. Is it clear as much? Okay, good. Okay. That was informational item. We've given staff direction. I think we're good. Thank you very much, Cory. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well, the commissioners that have shown up. Appreciate it.
Okay. Doug, can you do it in 10 minutes? It's only entire fire policy, because I am not going to go against the frogs.
Can we go 20? Can we push it 20? I can give her hell, 20.
Fire guys, are you okay with it, if we had to come back? No? I don't think so. All right. Kathy, would you let the frog jumping crew know we might give you extra minutes? Thank you. All right, Doug.
15? Make it work. 12 and a half. Tick tock.
Tick tock.
No pressure, guys.
It's okay. It's frog jump. Oh, gosh.
And we're ready.
Thank you very much. We are on item 25.
Item 25, informational item, building. Receive a presentation of proposed county fire prevention program.
Good morning, Vice Chair, members of the board. Doug Oliver, chief building official. What I bring to you today is something I would argue is long overdue. We've put together a proposal for a countywide fire prevention program. I want to just briefly go through what we are proposing and get some feedback from the board and, and see where it goes from there. If this will work for me. Okay, perfect. Okay, so there's a handful of topics we have to power through. I mean, briefly, strategic, strategic plan objectives. We have our current service model and, and the challenges associated with that, what we're proposing, and how we put that together through an MOU. And then we're going to end with cost recovery and then solicit your input. So the strategic plan objective is establish a joint powers authority and memorandum of understanding between the county and the fire districts, enhancing collaboration efficiencies for building and planning activities. It kind of goes beyond that, but that was the, that was the impetus for all of this. And in moving forward with this, we had to identify some underlying principles. We, we wanted to make sure that this was the most practical and the efficient model that we could bring to your board. We wanted to make sure that we were complying with all the state regulations and the current fire codes. And then we wanted to make sure that it benefited all of the, you know, the following organizations, like county offices, fire districts, and the community served. And that community can be broken down in several areas. I provided, you know, the top three for, for efficiency, the building construction, community businesses, and the public service organizations. But ultimately, this is going to benefit all, all members of the community. The current service model, we have our building code functions, which typically the building department is handling. Plan review and inspection under, under the building code and occupancy inspections of newly started businesses. The authority to enforce is broken up, kind of interesting, in the building code and fire code. Single-family dwellings and appurtenance structures are under the authority of the building official for interpretation and application of the codes. Once you get into any of the other construction types, the fire chief of a fire district or their authorized representative are, are the authority for rendering interpretations of the code and ultimate enforcement of that code. The fire code functions are very similar, only the fire permits are typically handled through each district. The, the permit types in the fire code are operational permits, which for several types of businesses in the community, they're handling hazardous materials, or they're performing functions that are dangerous if not done correctly. And so there are permit types relevant to that where they are inspected either annually or at the start of their, their program to make sure that they're conducting business safely. In addition, fire permits for construction, such as ancil systems in commercial kitchen hoods, fire sprinkler systems, fire alarm system, things like that. Those are through the fire code provisions. And as, as stated before, the building code and fire code references have identical enforcement authorities. If it's something to do with a house, the building official calls the ball. But anything beyond that, it's the fire chief typically. Then what we have is state mandated facility inspections. There's several components of, of state law that require several business types and several structure types to be inspected annually. In the jail, every two years, hotels, motels, apartments, schools, those are annual inspections, and we are required to report annually to the state on the success of that program. The, once again, the authority to enforce goes back to the, the fire chief or the authorized representative. The, the challenges we have is that we have bifurcated reviews because of this. We, in any plan review of a commercial building, we do the review. We send it to the fire district for their review, and depending on the staffing and, and what's happening in the community at the time, it could be a day, it could be three days, it could be, you know, a week. And in addition to that, we're looking at building code items, not necessarily reflective of fire code items. So sometimes there's communication where things don't, don't jive on the plans between the two. So it does create conflicts in, in the design and ultimate approval of building permits. We also have incompatible technology. Every organization in the county has a different model or application and a different age of those applications. So they don't, they don't jive well together as a whole. Staffing, acquisition, retention, and training. The fire regulations enforcement is specialized field. It's difficult to recruit across 10 separate organizations with consistency. Interpretation, because there are multiple authorities, and those multiple authorities are managing different topography, geography, you know, the amount of businesses, the types of businesses. Sometimes the interpretation between districts is going to be a little different. So juggling nine different interpretations sometimes can be challenging. Not to say that that happens often, but we have these challenges. And then emergency prioritization, obviously, if, if there is a major fire, that is going to take priority over all of the other fire prevention functions when you have limited staffing. So the results essentially, inconsistent communication between agencies, data management gaps between, interdepartmentally, looking for information, and what I like to call answer shopping. If the customer doesn't like Doug's answer, he goes and finds the fire chief in the middle of something and tries to get a different answer to bring back to me, and vice versa. That, that does create confusion. Inconsistent fire and panic safety enforcement and public education, delays in permit processing, insurance service response, essentially, that all equates to delays across the board. So there was another overriding concern that the state fire marshal has the authority to enforce any or all these programs in the event that the local authority cannot provide services. In addition, the fire chief has every right to contact state fire marshal's office and say, hey, I don't have staffing right now to do this, so we want you to do it. But when you do that, the state fire marshal comes in, takes over that program, and charges the state fees. And generally, those fees are higher. And those timeframes are statewide timeframes. And if you've ever submitted a application to the state for anything, you know that that's going to take some time. My assertion has always been for county businesses that county staff can do the job faster, they can do it cheaper, and with a better understanding of the needs of our community. So the proposed program model is to consolidate the fire prevention services into a single program. We want to unify the interpretation of the codes through the JPA. We want to unify the communication methods. We want to provide a one-stop shop for streamlined permitting of, of fire permits, consolidate the inspection program across the county for the various fire permits and fire inspections, and consolidate the state reporting, so there's not nine districts reporting to the state fire marshal. There's one entity consolidating all that data and doing it at one time every year. And then we want to, we want to provide someone who's going to be an advocate between the fire districts and the board. So I threw a name out, Calaveras Unified Fire Prevention Bureau, or what, you know, whatever else you want to call it. Essentially, I want to create a program with a fire marshal, one L, that's a typo, who acts as a liaison between the fire districts and county offices, as well as an enforcement representative to all the districts under the JPA, who can implement and maintain a fire procedure manual, perform efficient plan review, and do inspections relative to panic and fire safety. We want to consolidate the stand, state mandated facility inspections and reporting tools for the fire districts. We want to implement educational programs for business owners and public entities, which is another one of our strategic plan goals. There's another one there. It got blocked out. How do I shut that off? Okay. The program model has two distinct chains of command. One for management of staff, and then the other is a chain of command for interpretation enforcement of the codes. Because we have to maintain that authority through the fire department to meet state, state regulations. So essentially, right now, as being proposed, is that me, as a building official, would be the county staff department head who's managing that member. But we are, we are providing employees to provide a service to the, the JPA. And so any of the, the interpretations or appeals or that sort of thing that someone would bring forward would be decided upon by that district chief. I'll touch on that a little more as we move forward. All county staff performing these activities must be trained and certified through state-recognized organizations. I'll say right now, currently, our supervising building inspector is a certified fire inspector through International Code Council. I myself am now a certified fire marshal through ICC. Those are not the state certifications. We would be pursuing those as well in order to meet the state mandates. And staff recruitment, I am recommending that at every recruitment, we have a member of the JPA as a participant in the interview process to make sure that we can select someone who is going to interface with the JPA and the district fire chiefs in, in the appropriate manner. So this is kind of what the chain of command is going to look like, if, if you like. This is kind of the best idea I could come up with, where we have, on the administration of the program, we have the board supervisors as, you know, the, the implementing force, the administrative, administration of that being the building official currently, or whoever you decide to place this, you know, to place in their shop. And then the joint powers authority being the root for the code authorities that allows this fire prevention program to work. So a general understanding needs to be made between the county and the JPA regarding what services the fire districts are authorizing us to do. The MOU itself is that document, and that document is going to have attachments. So there is an understanding that the county is going to perform the services contained in the attachments. The attachments are every fire district's needs. So as I understand it, all the fire districts that I've talked to are 100% interested in the county maintaining the permitting process. And, you know, so therefore, we would be doing that, and every one of those fire districts are saying, we're remanding that to you. There are a few fire districts that have preferences on the inspections of a handful of business types, and they want to keep that for them, for their districts. That's entirely within their authority and entirely within the framework of this MOU. And this MOU would be designed to allow later on down the road, if there is an opportunity or something comes up where a fire district wants to take on more responsibility, they can modify that MOU and, and change the dynamics. Ultimately, if we have a, a uniform framework, anything that fire districts or, or, sorry, district or districts ask us to do, we can accommodate at any level they're asking us to provide it. And a specific delegation of duties by each district is necessary and made part of the, the MOU document. We did shop this to the state fire marshal's office and say, is this, is this legal? And they essentially said, yeah. They didn't get into specifics, but they made it clear that the JPA has every right to enter into an agreement for services. So we've, we've got buy-off at the state level here. Now, cost recovery is going to be similar to the building department. There are several regulations contained in state law that allows fire districts or the- that allows fire districts or their representatives to collect service fees for the services they are providing. So very similar to the building department, we would collect service fees in the form of permit fees, inspection fees, to fund the program. The only startup money, there would be no general fund for startup, there would be approximately $10,000 of building reserve fund to acquire a, a software model that is geared specifically to fire prevention and, and and other fire services. Recommend inclusion of the program services into the building department service fees. I have basic fees already included. When we adopted the fee study three years ago, we did have a basic framework for operational permits, fire permits. However, that is somewhat simplistic in light of how other fire departments and fire districts manage their fee structure. We wanted something comparable. And so we would be essentially moving forward with a fee study in July that would consolidate the, the fire prevention fees into the building services along with some of the other fee types that, that we need to update. So the board does have options because as part of an M O U, the county may decide to limit the services that we wish to provide. So any, any component here, we can say, um, we're, we're willing to stand up a program for this, but here are a few things that we don't know if we should be involved in. And so the four primaries here are mandated inspections. Does your board wish to consolidate those services? Do you wish to consolidate fire and building code review and inspections or not? Do you, you know, uh, do you want us to maintain the fire prevention software platform that's going to unify this? And then the ultimate data processing, uh, data management permit processing, should the county be involved in that? I would argue that, that in order to have a comprehensive process, we need all those functions working together. And we really shouldn't separate anything out. But there is that, you do have that option. We can, we can't pick and choose and negotiate between the, the county and the J P A. So. So next steps after this discussion, if you guys decide that this is what we want to do, the next step would essentially be formalizing the M O U and bringing it to the J P A for signature. And then once that's signed, bring it forward to the board in a separate meeting for your board to vote on and, and sign. And once that's done, we complete the work of, uh, putting together the procedures and standards and educational material to the public. I can tell you, we, we've been working on that diligently along with this presentation. I, I would have loved to have given you a stack of paperwork. We didn't have it when I put this, uh, brought this forward for consideration. But in the last couple of weeks, my staff has been working very hard, and we do have a handful of those checklists. We have procedures. We, uh, we've, we've got a really good team working here, and we've got, I want to say about 70% built out. So it wouldn't take long to implement this and, and by July, bring forward a fee schedule and have a fire prevention plan, a full program in place. Questions?
Questions. Supervisor Stoppard.
Yeah, uh, just, just as we move forward, Doug, I'll maintain my mantra I have all along with you. Interpretation of code is key. Maintain your discretion. With the building official keeping innovative workaround in cases where code does not jive with necessarily the work of the land, you know? And we do know there's absolutes in the code that you can't do workarounds. I understand that. But when they're, in the cases that there are, and you have the ability, please use your discretion.
May I speak to that for a moment?
Yes, sir.
We, we are blessed to have nine fire chiefs who are, are problem solvers. And, uh, my stance in this organization would be to call the code as it is written. When there's hardship, work with the owner and the fire chief. If there's an alternate interpretation or something they know they can provide that makes the decision different, work through them to get that answer so that we can get something that the customer needs that meets the, the goals of fire prevention. So we, you've got nine other members here that share the same, the same goal.
I appreciate that. I understand. All I've talked to, the majority of these gentlemen, both of them.
Very well. Thank you.
Supervisor Follendorf.
I echo Ben. I think discretion is one of the biggest things, especially as we are developing and we have such a wide variety of open space. And being conscientious of some of, some of that, um, when we start to develop next to these open spaces. I think Ben hit it on the, we need to be creative in how we problem solve that.
Supervisor Hebert.
I just want to say thank you. I think it's an interesting model, and thank you for bringing it to us.
I have a quick question, a couple of quick questions. First, 100% of the J P A on board? Okay. Good. Are agreements with the J P A and not with each individual fire district, correct?
That is correct.
So our M O U is with them. I'll be interested if we can get that out, what the carve outs are. Who wanted, you mentioned that some fire departments wanted to keep some things out, certain projects. That, that's not true many to this, but I'd be curious. And the fire chiefs remain, retain the authority that wasn't one of those four items on the list, correct? So they're just delegating that piece.
Correct.
They can still do their jobs.
Absolutely.
Okay, so you are seeking, um, you are seeking direction from the board.
I'm, I'm sticking the thumbs up to move forward.
And information and general direction. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none. Are there any online? Oh, come on up, chief. What's going on up the hill?
Yeah, just for the, uh, just for the record, and I know times are of the essence. Long overdue. Great work by your staff here and your local fire districts. Support it and recommend moving forward.
Doug, I'm not seeing any red lights here. So, um, thank you very much for the information. Is there anything else anybody wants to add on the side before we close it? Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to supervisor announcements. Any board member give a brief reports of any meetings attended at expensive local agencies or make any other announcements. Starting off with supervisor Hebert.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I attended on the fourth last Thursday, the agency on aging. Again, amazing work done by Common Grounds here in Calveris. Also, last Saturday, May 6th, Chief Johnson hosted the wildfire community preparedness day, which I spoke at. And we're looking to do another one here shortly in terms of evacuations.
Supervisor Stoppard.
Saturday, I attended the kids fishing day in Murphy's Park. I, uh, it was actually with the rain and everything. It was a phenomenal success. I, I was impressed with how many people showed up. A little problem with the flow and, uh, was a bit higher, but you know, when we have this much water, we can't, we can't contain it and hold it back for as long. Uh, great, great, great day, success. Lots of hot dogs went out.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Stoppard. I know you always cover the hot dogs out of your own pockets. Thank you very much. Supervisor Follendorf? Nothing? I, I'm required to report out that I was in Houston last week giving a broadband conference presentation. I got out in one piece, which is a success. I will be heading up to Butte County for more R C R C and Gold State Connect Authority meetings at the end of this week. Is there anything else? Madam CEO, do you have anything you'd like to report? Notes?
I do not.
Counsel? Thank you very much. Thank you all for your work today. We stand adjourned.